In here, we kind of got sidetracked at the beginning. So, welcome, everybody. Just a few, hi, Steve.
Hello.
A few things, we will go through our meeting. In our discussion with the restrooms, we're going to bring in Tracy. Tracy Walsh, I didn't know this, so hi, Tracy. And you're welcome to be here and before the hearing from you. We'll go through our agenda, and I'd just like everyone to know, we, unlike the county legislators, do value public opinion. And at the end of our, at the end of the number three approval of minutes, we will open it to the public. After that, where if we have time, we'll go, we're going into code update review, which everyone's welcome to watch and stay with us, but we're not going to be taking any public comment at this time. We're trying to, trying to finish things up with the update review, and then there'll be a public hearing where everyone will have plenty of time to comment on the changes that we've made and or are recommending, I should say. So, those are just a couple of rules. Everyone else will be muted. I think chat is muted, so try to keep things rolling here. So, start off, we have the siding of the wastewater treatment plant, discusses a bit with Marie, that and a couple other small, there's a few other small projects that we really need to get done. Not sure where we're at, Steve, if you have anything on this, I think we should advertise or we need to get them done, so recommendations.
We have the company that did the building originally, and maybe they'd be interested in coming in and just putting siding on. All the framing's done.
Okay, so it's all, and the doors are in?
Overhead doors are in, yeah.
Okay, no, it's just a sign, all right. We know somebody has that, the information on the company?
Well, Greg had it before in his office, so I'm sure we can get it from Matt.
Okay, so why don't I, I'll try to do that and get that information and get that going. Then there's the roof also, is that something we should, we should farm out, Steve, the roof on the highway department?
Well, I'm going to look into finding the panels.
Okay.
And then we'll do, we'll go from there.
Leaking badly, or just when?
I have no idea, I haven't been in the building, but I haven't heard from Bugsy. I know the last, we had that really heavy rainstorm two weeks ago.
Right.
That leaked a little, so I don't know about since then.
I believe that the siding may be covered by the, the money that was, that was given to us to do that building. So, that may not, that may not be something that we would have to pay for, that may be covered. Ren, do you know anything about that?
I don't, no, I don't know anything about that at all, sorry.
Okay.
I've never heard about that either, but most of the work's done, it's not a lot left there, so.
Right.
Okay, there's that, and I think there's, what about the side door, the player company, is that something we need to find some of the, to get, or?
Yeah, well, we'll have to get.
There's some masonry work there too that needs to do, the bricks and the.
Yeah, there's a few things that need to happen.
Okay.
And those, those doors on those old buildings like that with the block are hard to, to change out.
Right.
So, yeah, there's some effort involved there.
Okay, I'll try to draw something up and see if we can get some, an added general ad for small, for small jobs and explain them and go from there. If there's anything else that every, anyone knows of the late, to get prices on, we should, you know, just kind of add that, so that.
My house needs painting.
The ladder.
That's not really. So, so we will, I'll take care of that, and I'll contact Matt. And ask him about the original installers.
Michelle probably also has that information.
Okay.
Bart also has it. Our old engineer Bart is aware of all that stuff, too.
I gotta, just hold on one second, still trying to get this other thing going, so hold on.
ET, ET.
He's got hell of a.
He's right there, ET, hey, Sam?
Hello.
Okay, we're missing Steve, give him one second, he's gone.
He put Sam in charge, hi, Sam.
Hi, Sam. What do you, what do you have to say? What's good?
He seriously has a sweatshirt on.
Can't quite see you.
Nothing's good, Corona ruined everything.
Oh, dear.
I agree with you there, Sam.
Yeah. We are going on vacation now. I am going on vacation now.
Lucky.
But on Thursday, I have to get Corona tested.
That's good, that's easy. They're not even gonna stick, they're not even gonna stick a needle in you.
No, they're not, I don't think they're gonna give me a shot, but they are gonna stick a Q-tip up my nose until it touches my brain.
Yes, you have to watch out for your brain.
Yeah, when I got my test, it felt like she was gonna poke my eyeball out through my nose.
When daddy had his done, it definitely hit his brain.
What are you doing?
Steve, where are you?
I'm printing something.
He's printing something.
Oh, okay.
Maybe printing the agenda.
I just ran down to Doug's real quick.
Do you open?
I don't know, I'm just kidding. You're in my chair, kid.
All right.
Hey.
This is quite the muting so far.
I'm trying to print all that stuff, like that Bugsy sent, and it's just miles and miles of paper going through with all the pictures.
Yeah, there's a lot.
Yeah, it's been printing for 10 minutes.
Okay, we'll get into the, oh, let's go into a discussion of public restrooms. Lynn, if you want to, I know Lynn had made some calls from the county, and Tracy's here, so if you can introduce Trace, then tell us what you know.
Can we unmute her now, so that she?
I can.
Okay. Um, yeah, I spoke with Tracy Walsh at Putnam Tourism last week, and, you know, I described to her the conundrum we're in, wanting to keep everybody safe and merchants really wanting us to open these restrooms and, you know, not having the staff really to clean them according to how, how we're really supposed to. And it, it really boils down to the fact that it's municipal property, and so we're responsible for maintaining it. However, Tracy did some additional research, and it kind of looks like, and, and I followed up on that, too, it kind of looks like the information we're getting from the CDC says that one state, that if we do our regular cleaning schedule, like we usually did, like either Saturday morning or Friday night, a good cleaning and sanitizing then, and also one on Sunday morning, and in the meantime, limit the hours that it's open and have volunteers go in and, and, you know, disinfect, spray disinfectant spray on all the, all the fixtures and everything, that we really are doing what we can and what's reasonable for us to keep it safe for the public. Tracy made some really good suggestions, though, as far as enlisting the help of the visitors that come here, and I thought this was really helpful. I think we need to make some signs that we put both on the inside of the restroom and on the door of each restroom, saying, we clean these once, once a day, we sanitize them throughout the day, but we need your help in keeping these restrooms clean and safe for everyone to use. And you need to wear a mask, you need to wash your hands thoroughly, dry with a paper towel. And I don't remember, we have the hand blowers, right, in there?
No.
Or do we have towels? We do have towels.
I think the hand blowers were wrecked, hand, I don't think we have paper towel either, we couldn't keep up with them, or people were stealing all the paper or smashing them. So, right now, I don't think we have, as far as washing and drying your hands, you're really, you can.
Well, you know, we can keep it stocked with soap, we can keep it stocked with soap, and if people don't dry their hands, then too bad. They can wipe them on their pants if they want. But I think enlisting the public's help and also stating very clearly on these signs that if the public does not help us keep these clean and safe for people to use, that we'll just close them permanently. But I, you know, I really like the idea, you know, I kind of, I wasn't fond of what Jack was proposing last week, it seemed really risky, but on, you know, further research with the CDC and also the State Department of Health and talking to a couple of people there, I think we can do some very low cost ways of enlisting the public's help to keep it clean and safe from people, for people to use. The other thing I thought, I've got a whole bunch of spray bottles here left from Veggie Go-Go, I can make up alcohol or bleach sanitizer, and we can just keep it in there for people to sanitize the surfaces before and after they use them. So, that's where we are. Tracy, do you have anything to add to that?
No, well, a few things. So, Lynn and I had two really good conversations, and thank you, and I want you to know that I'm, I'm listening. And a couple of things, I have asked the county and gotten a verbal okay, and I'm hoping to go over Thursday afternoon and pick up, I asked for six, they're big, I think they're gallon jugs, I don't know if anybody has seen them, of the sanitizer from New York State, and that will be, you know, no, no cost to bring over, I'm gonna drop them off at the Village Hall, and suggested, I'm hoping to drop them off on Friday. And we had mentioned back and forth, if they're available and I can get their, my hands on them, if the highway crew needs gloves or masks, then I'm happy to add that to my list and bring it over on Friday.
Right.
So, we had gone back and forth, what, you know, I know that, I know bathrooms even pre-COVID, that was my first, you were my first village board to visit, and that was a sticking point then, and I think it's safe to say that the situation has not improved with COVID. I'm going to do some research, I know that during the beginning of the pandemic, US Travel and a few other agencies had made, at no cost, some signage, so I'm gonna see if any of it applies, I'll send it, since Lynn has been my contact, I'll send it to her, and if you guys approve of it. I do think a campaign, it seems as if the tourists are not being thoughtful and clean, and, and some sort of campaign to have them buy into, you know, we, we need you to care about where you are, and this is a beautiful town, and, and we, you know, we want you to, to be able to use the bathroom. The CDC does seem to say now it's less on surfaces, and this is more bathroom talk than any of you have ever really wanted. But one big positive that I think should make you feel better in the middle of this is it appears that because the bathrooms are single bathrooms, so Lynn and I went back and forth, you know, if you had two sets of bathrooms, say, you know, for, for men and women, right, and they were stalls, so several different people could be there at a time, you would have a much larger issue on hand, so because say if Lynn and I were in there together, we're not in the same family unit, right? And so flushing and washing and breathing and all of those things would create a problem, but because they're unisex, single use, or you go in there with members of your family, that creates a much better environment, because you're only in there one at a time. I mean, you know, we've all learned, all the disgusting things happen when you flush a toilet, but that's still only you, it's not someone else in there, and I'm not gonna waste any more of your time on that, but I think you get the point, the fact that they're single person at a time is something that is a positive. So, I was in Cold Spring yesterday, but they were closed, I was gonna peek into the bathroom. The same goes for the air dryers, why, they're much better, because you don't have the paper towel litter, right? If you had more than one person in there, they're not good, because the, the air spreads the virus. So, if, if, you know, I'm not sure if any, are you saying for sure, Mayor, that, that the air dryers are broken, or you just don't know, and it's okay?
The air dryers work.
They work.
Oh, hey, Bugsy.
Okay, so, the fact that, that they work is great, because even though they're not, they wouldn't be the optimum thing if there were multiple people in there, since it's one person at a time, or they're in there with your family, they can use them, and you'll have less paper towel issue. So, if you have the soap, and I supply the hand sanitizers, and I do think that Lynn's idea is really good, to put a bottle, if she's got the spray bottles and she's willing to do it, you just have to label it with a piece of masking tape what it is, you know, to put that in there. And as I said, I would put right on the sign, you know, these are open until, you know, as long as you keep these clean, they're open, you know? And if they're clogged, or if they're, if they become unsanitary, we're gonna have to close them, and I guess you're gonna see how it goes. I mean, we can all hope for the best, right? Prepare for the worst and hope for the best. Um, that's really, you know, if you want me to send Lynn some signage to see if you like it, you know, for, for this weekend, I would just put open, you know, these are cleaned and sanitized for your use, they will be open until they are, until they're not, not usable, or they will be open as long as possible. If you have to close them at 2:00, I would. You know, Lynn and I had, when we spoke on Friday, I mean, it's, you know, we, we don't, nobody wants people doing what people are doing on public property or anywhere, we're not even gonna go into that, you know? It's, it's terrible. Hoping that at least having them open for a good portion of the day will alleviate some of that.
Tracy also mentioned in our conversation that it would be beneficial to, to maybe put a larger trash receptacle in each room, in each bathroom, you know, for people to deposit towels or gloves.
Masks and gloves.
Whatever it is they're getting rid of. Bugsy, I'm glad you joined in, are, do we, do you have enough staff on the highway crew now to do the regular cleaning that you did pre-COVID?
There's only two of us that are willing to clean the bathrooms.
Okay.
Bugsy, did you get my box of baseball cards?
Can you see what I'm doing here? Sorry.
I mean, I assume we're still waiting for Jack to come up with, with his MOU, because that's, that's the volunteer staff that we have coming through if it works.
What are you saying, Fran, that Jack, Jack's plan, I think, according to Eliza yesterday, just verbally, was to go in in the afternoon and spray, some, go in and spray disinfectant.
No.
What Jack, Jack was gonna do, at the last time we talked, was he was gonna go write up, you know, write us up, you know, a proposal on how they would staff, when they would staff, the hours they would staff, and how they would, you know, what would be included. And we said, once we had that, and we took Bugsy and made sure we had people that are willing to go in and clean, that we could move forward on that. And I've had a couple back and forths with Jack on emails, you know, he was saying he was working on it, but I haven't seen anything yet, and, and so, we're waiting on Jack.
I just wanna stay in my lane there, I didn't know.
And I'm not sure if he was totally representing the chamber either, you know, he was working kind of independently or with them, so I haven't heard from Eliza, and whether this is part of a chamber plan, or Jack and the people that are gonna be, you know, manning the visitor center, because he said they had people lined up, so we want to make sure if we're opening, that's actually there, and there are people lined up. So, as soon as we get, as soon as we hear from Jack, as soon as we know what's happening and when they could do it, because I've also asked them to include our opening, because we don't want the police opening just routinely and then have nobody there, so, you know, I want part of the, the plan to be that whoever manning the visitor center open up and close at the end for the period of time that they're able to, to lay disinfectant during the day.
Just to catch you up on that, Tracy, Jack was suggesting that the volunteers from the chamber open the restrooms at 11:00 AM and close them at 4:00. And meanwhile, like periodically sanitizing throughout the day.
Yeah, that's what Eliza had said verbally, I, I'm sorry, I didn't know that he was writing something up. And sir, I know that you have a nickname, but I only, I'm only meeting you for the first time, so, the highway supervisor, are you Robert, or is that, are you Robert?
I am Robert Downey Jr., better known as Bugsy.
Hello, how are you?
How are you? It's a pleasure to meet you.
Do you need, do you have masks and gloves for the people who are willing to clean?
It's just me and one other employee, we do have masks, we do have gloves.
Do you have enough? Could we use more? Do you need more?
The village has a huge box, fairly big box, I shouldn't say huge, box of masks, and we have gloves also.
Okay, good.
That we can also offer to Jack and whoever's at the visitor center to give out.
Okay.
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 Thank you for your help, Tracy, and.
Thanks, Tracy.
Thank you, everybody, I'm actually gonna, not that I don't want to hear about all the rest, but I'm, I'm gonna log off, and, and so Lynn, if I, if I come across any signage that I think might be useful, I'll send it your way.
That's great, that'd be super, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Tracy.
Thanks, Tracy.
Appreciate you.
Lynn, also, Lynn, also, if you go online, there are, if you go to COVID signs, I've looked at them, there's signs that are available also that can help you create.
Yeah, I've been looking for ones that I can kind of edit, that are editable, you know, so we can put our particular notes relevant to what we're facing here in Cold Spring and what we need our visitors to do.
I think Jack, Jack had also mentioned that they were coming up with signs.
Right.
Okay.
Both inside and outside, so they may already have that, or be moving on that.
Okay, well, I can reach out to him again if you like, about Jack's email, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, on to more fun, question on the garbage truck, Bugsy done quite a bit of research and sent us a lot of materials. So, Bugsy, what's your recommendation? And out of the three, not only prices, I have, I am not familiar at all with which vehicles are more reliable, which lasts longer, stuff like that, so where are you at, and what's your recommendation?
All three are pretty good vehicles, I'm used to International, that's what Eddie had gotten for years, that's what we've used. All three would be good candidates for a vehicle for us. I mean, if we could, if we gotta take, we take the cheaper one, that's fine with me, I mean, like I said, all three are good quality vehicles.
As far as power and ratings and everything, they're all similar?
For the most part, yes, probably within like 40 horsepower of each other.
And the, the lowest with, including the 8500 for installation, which is the lowest bid?
Ben Funk, I think it was Ben Funk, right?
Yes, which is International.
Yeah.
Okay.
Bugsy, I have a couple of questions, I noticed, the first one is quoting a 2021, it wouldn't have delivery, you said until October, and then they're gonna work on it. The other two are quoting 2020 trucks, will we, will we have them sooner, are they in stock, are they available?
Two of them are in stock, I believe Freightliner and.
Freightliner was the 2021 that he said October.
Oh, okay, then it would be the International and the other one.
Peterbilt.
The International's a 2021 also.
But one International is, and the second one from Ben Frank isn't. There's two International quotes, right?
No, there should only be one.
What did I miss?
There should be a Freightliner, International.
Okay, sorry, yes, okay.
And Peterbilt.
Okay, so the Freightliner is the 2021. The other thing is, one of them mentioned, I think it was Ben Frank mentioned, insurance and stockpile of extra parts if we needed, the others did not mention anything about coverage with insurance, so I, I assume there's some warranty on these?
Yes.
That's as far as I got in terms of all those lists, those lists and lists and lists of stuff, didn't even bother looking at them, sorry, Bugs, but, yeah, those are the things that I picked up.
So, does anyone, did anyone tally, I didn't tally which one was the cheapest?
I believe it was the Ben Funk, the 20, the International, 20.
That's a 2021 also, says on the specs.
Yeah.
So, 89, 400.
Well, I think if it's the International, and it's, that's the cheapest, and that's what we've been using, and we have to get something, the truck broke down, I don't know if everyone's aware, again, today, and then what this means is our crew is out with little, the dump trucks, the smaller ones, picking up and picking up the garbage, loading it into the truck, bringing it down, putting it in the garbage truck, and on a day like today, our friend Bob Noack, or Bob, what's Bob's last name?
Bob Newhall.
Newhall, it was not looking too good, so I, we definitely have to do something, we need another vehicle, so.
But back to the availability date of the International, if it's, is it 2021? Or I, the way I read it, the first one was the one that was going to be later in the year, and the other two were current availability.
The Freightliner, I was under the impression was later in the year, the other two were available as of right now.
Okay, so, Steve, you thought it was the International was a 2021 date?
It says right here.
Yeah, it says 2021.
It says it's 2021, but they come out earlier than the end of the year, that's common.
Okay, so that's, that's the model, model year, the question is availability.
Oh, right. Bugsy's saying that he thinks it's available now.
That's what I thought, okay. Okay. So, can we confirm that it's available, available now? The International?
I can confirm it tomorrow.
That'd be great, that'd be great. The question is, how do we pay for it?
We have some insurance money coming in on the other truck, right?
It's about 20,000, if I remember.
20 or 30, okay.
30.
30, I just thought 30, yeah.
This is gonna, this is gonna come up to about 91, 92,000.
Right.
Without, without towing or whatever is needed to get the garbage portion of our truck to the body of the International.
Is that, is that all include the 8500 that they're quoting to put the whole thing together, does that include taking it off of the old truck and?
The 8500 is Kevin Riker's price to get the old garbage truck up there, take the body off of it, and mount it on the new body and cabin chassis.
Okay.
He'll go to Ben Funk and do that?
We would have to get the truck down from Ben Funk down to here.
Here, okay, all right.
Which is not a problem.
Yeah, just drive it, yeah. Okay.
I'm a little confused on logistics, the, the new, the new cabin chassis would have to come here, and then.
It would, it would go to Kevin Riker, it's up on Route 9, Riverview Industries, drive it down, be it Ben Funk from up in Hudson, New York, the other guy who is all the way up in, I believe, Maine, is the second truck and Freightliner. who is all the way up in, I believe Maine, is the second truck and Freightliner is right across the river in Orange County.
Okay, so we would be responsible for getting the new cabin chassis and the old garbage truck to the guy who's gonna put them together?
Um, as far as Freightliner goes, he spoke with Kevin Reichard, um, as far as...
Right.
Taking care of everything.
Right.
The other two, like I said, would have to be, pick up the truck, bring it down to Kevin Reichard, he would tow the old garbage truck up to his place.
Okay, okay, so there may be an additional fee for the tow of the old garbage truck from here to Hudson.
No, not to Hudson, just up on Route Nine in Cold Spring.
Got it.
Can we get something in writing from Kevin, specifically spelling out what he's gonna do for the eighty-five-hundred or whatever else?
Only for the Freightliner, and I don't even know if he itemized it out, um, I can talk to him tomorrow as well.
That'd be great, if you could get it in writing from him what his cost, what, what his cost is gonna be and what's involved in doing all that. So it sounds, it sounds as if we're gonna have to come up with between thirty and forty thousand dollars.
Uh, I'm looking, I'm looking at a total, Maria, of about ninety, ninety-seven, nine, ninety-eight thousand, if it's eighty-nine, eighty-nine-four plus eighty-five-hundred.
Right, right, good.
Ninety-seven, and we've only got thirty coming in.
Okay, so, between sixty and seventy.
Why don't we, why don't we, Bugsy, why don't you get the information on the, on the international, seems like that's the way to go, and see if, if we can get that right away, and if we can, if they can install for the same price, you know, the, our, uh, back of our truck onto the, the new, the new vehicle, and if there's any additional costs, so we know everything, and then we can run it by Michelle and see how much money we have, how we're gonna, you know, and how we take out a loan for it or whatever, however we're gonna pay for it.
I'm thinking a loan is the best way to go.
Yeah, we'd probably do a three-year or something.
Do they, do they finance it to Ben Funk International, you know?
I believe, uh, all three of them do.
Okay.
So, I mean, we'd have Michelle do a, a quote from them for financing for the International Harvester. I'll talk with her tomorrow on that.
Yeah, I think so, I think sometimes she gets, uh, really good rates, I think the last one was MNT that she got good rates from.
From the bank, yeah.
Bugsy, what's the status of the other truck, the one, the good truck that isn't good?
Uh, last Tuesday was the starter, um, Hatfield Brothers, uh, came down and took care of that ASAP, and this morning was the ICP unit, which is the, uh, it's the injector control pressure module. What it does is it pressurizes the fuel going into the fuel injectors and keeps them at the right pressure. If the pressure is wrong, it will not, it'll run horribly or not run at all, like it did this morning. They changed that out and they also changed the small wiring harness in front of it.
So we're good next week, Friday?
I hope so.
Okay, so we're set on the garbage truck, get all the information, tally everything up, get it to Michelle.
Right.
And we'll, uh, hopefully have it for the next meeting.
Right.
Okay. Uh, next, uh, while you're here Bugs, the roof, uh, you know, we talked to it a bit, Steve was gonna find the panels, how bad is it leaking? Is it all of them?
The, uh, the only time it leaks since he fixed it was when we got those heavy rains.
Okay.
Before that, there was not an issue, um, and after those heavy rains, I've never seen it come down into the garage like that.
Okay.
Because we haven't had that much rain.
True.
That was exceptional.
We had no, we had no snow, so you don't really know the status of if we get some heavy snows on there in the winter.
Oh, it would melt.
Right through.
Water, yeah.
Alright, so Steve will find that and we'll, we'll work on that. Benedict Avenue, any, any epiphanies?
No epiphanies yet, I spoke with Berto, as long as we just keep it minimal as far as the summer goes, we only do once a month pickup, the minute we start getting into October, um, usually every other week and then eventually down to every week. Bobby Flaherty spoke with me, he might have a place to go with just leaves, but I'm not sure like if he understands the bulk of what we get, especially spring and autumn. And unfortunately, most people can't even do their brush right, they're not gonna sort leaves and sticks out and every, and dirt and stomps.
Stomps. My god. Oh, Bob, Bob was on the call last week, so he did, you, you did mention the volumes of leaves in the spring and in the fall, so he did hear that.
Okay.
I know that we've, go ahead Maria, I'm sorry.
No, no, you go Fran.
Uh, we talked about this a number of times, um, vacuuming up the leaves and I know all the pros and cons of what if it rains, blah, blah, blah. Other municipalities seem to be able to handle everybody raking their leaves out and vacuuming them up. Is there a way we can try doing that for a couple of months, you know, on a rotating these two blocks this day and so on and so forth based on the weather, to just vacuum?
Absolutely, absolutely, we can try that, um, the only thing I worry about is getting them off the road just in case it's going to snow.
And sir, what does, what does, what does doing, doing that vacuuming do for us since we still don't have a place to put them?
Well, it might, it might give us the ability to keep the leaves separate, if people just rake out their leaves and put the rest of the stuff in whatever container they have, you know, it has to be clear, it's only leaves that we can vacuum up. I don't know if anything else can be vacuumed, uh, it may give us the ability to do that, I don't, you know, I don't know.
When we use it, um, we do get small sticks up to an inch in thickness that go through there, they get ground up, um, and if that was the case, it totally, for the most part, alleviates the bags people put out.
I think it's gonna be really, I think it's gonna be really tough, on a lot of streets, people are parked all the time and how do you deal with that and...
And it's a lot more labor, it's a lot more labor on your part.
Um, it's very time-consuming dumping bags, especially when they put sticks in there and everything like that.
I mean, we'd have to, we'd have to just sort of come up with some kind of a calendar of which streets, I mean, I don't know how many, how much time it would take to do the whole village, um, and then would we, would we have certain hours that people can't park on certain sides of the street, you go back to the city, you know, alternate side parking, but, um, something, something, some way to, maybe we could just do it on some streets, I don't know, streets that only have parking on one side or whatever. I mean, I know we have...
Go ahead.
I, I'm, I'm, I still don't see how this solves, solves or addresses the inability to dump more stuff at Benedict.
Um, it really doesn't, it would, the only way it would benefit us if Bobby Flaherty does have a place that we could put mass amount of leaves in.
Yeah. I mean, I, I don't disagree with you Fran, a really nice thing to have is have the village come around and, and pick up the leaves on the side of the street, um, but it, they have to dump them somewhere.
Right, and that's true, I mean, so I just, I was just thinking that maybe this concept of separating leaves would be better handled that way and it probably won't, um, and then there's always the, you know, if it's gonna rain tomorrow, we can't do it, so we have to reschedule that for another time if it's gonna snow.
It's windy and then people aren't gonna listen. And they blow all over.
Yeah.
Okay, on that note.
Bugsy, do you have any idea of what the weight is that you pick up once a month or in the spring and the fall? I mean, because one solution is to, is to take them as part of garbage, I don't like that solution because it's expensive.
Um, the leaves for the most part would tend to be light, but when they're wet, they're, they're heavy.
Yeah.
Um, in the autumn, we have gone out and just dumped bags and picked up the brush with the garbage truck, um, and dumping the bags, it took us about two, two and a quarter days with three guys to go around and do the whole village dumping all the bags of leaves. Some people put seventy-five to a hundred bags out.
Yeah. Yeah.
Does anybody know where local landscapers and cleanup people, where do they get rid of their leaves?
Um, they all have like small little plots with their property, I know Mark Manzella from Mark's Landscaping, um, tends to take his up to Beacon Royal.
So he pays for it?
Yes.
I'll ask my next door neighbor Tony where he puts, what, what they do with theirs, he's got Habitat Revival.
Yes.
I'll ask Tony where, what they do.
I know that one of the...
I'm just wondering if we're, if we're just throwing away a really valuable resource here. You know, like...
Where to put it, you know?
Yeah.
And the amount of work that would take to get that to where you need it?
Yeah. Well, how much work does that actually take? Are you familiar, have you been doing some, have you got some materials I might read about that or?
You're gonna have to rotate the pile, keep flipping it, um, you also do run into the problem of if they're dry enough, they will spontaneously combust sometimes.
Yep.
Right.
That's, that's great, it's a drill for the fire company.
And we get rid of the leaves.
Well, that's one way to get rid of them, yeah.
Alright, let's, I have one other idea, but I'm not gonna blur it out, so I'll follow up on it.
Oh, come on, what's that matter?
Not good.
I will also, uh, fire, I'll, I'll talk to the county, both, uh, Davey Keith who retired, he was the head of this side of the county or head of the highway department, he just retired, also Jerry Odell just retired as well, who was head of this side of the county. Um, I spoke to the new guy Pete the other day, he's the one who got us the Vactor truck the next day for the basin down in front of John Martin's, I can call and ask him and see if he's got any ideas of what can be done and if they have any property. The county has been dumping, uh, they've been cleaning, um, culverts out on this side of the county and they're dumping it down here at our garage in that pile, and I remember a while ago, there was a conversation that if they could use that pile, they would haul it away. But that was during Eddie's reign and I don't know, nothing has really been mentioned of it since.
I think you, I think you're a good person to mention it.
Absolutely.
I mean, the village has some, uh, some small plots here and there around the village that were, that are not being used for anything, is there a place we could start doing this?
The boat club.
No, I don't think so, not right now.
There's a, there's a piece of property on Westville Vedere, but, um, I, I, first off, I don't think you could get the truck backed into it, uh, and I don't think that's a good idea to do it. What about Haldane? Is it possible Haldane has some, uh, places where we could dump?
They bring all theirs and dump it kind of just above, like where the eagle is up there along that whole thing going down to the football field, they're probably in the same spot we are with overfilling. I know they push the stuff over.
Can you, can you check with them? Dave, you seem to have a good relationship with them.
I, I can ask.
Is, is Marathon Battery Property, um, private or public?
Private.
Private.
That stinks.
I've seen people dumping at the end of Boulevard, uh, where the circle is, where you can take the little path down to the train, I've seen people dumping off the end of that road there into the woods, there's a whole bunch of brush there, I don't know who owns that property, but if it's locked, the spring broker.
Some, some of it is owned by Metro North, um, and I suspect Forge Gate owns some of it, so it's a combination, combination Metro, Metro North. What about Sina Hudson, might they have, might they have some places where we could dump?
Good possibility.
I'm thinking off of Chestnut, where the Hall Road is, somewhere along the Hall Road, not that you could get your truck down there, but...
You'd be surprised what I can do with a garbage truck.
Yeah, we've already seen that.
Hey, he survived, yeah.
There is that, there is that path that, um, that's kind of at, at the corner of Nine D and Chestnut Street, the path that kind of comes up out of the foundry where, um, they don't really want people going down that path, not only is it kind of dangerous, but also, um, it, it's right underneath where a bunch of, uh, turkey vulture, vultures roost, and so when I've gone down there, it's just covered with vulture boot. So, you, you know, maybe Sina Hudson wouldn't mind us putting some of that stuff in there, because they wanna, I know they wanna discourage people from using that path, just because for health, health reasons, it's not safe to hike through there.
Did you know that there, there used to be foundry housing down there?
Yes, I do. I have one of those old maps that, uh, that shows where all the foundry houses, my house being one of them, you know?
I think we should move along here.
And do you want me to reach out to Sina Hudson?
Uh, if you'd like, sure, I'll, and I'll reach out to Highlands Land Trust.
I'll talk to the county, I will also talk to my brother-in-law, Ernie Lyons, um, as of six years ago, I believe they owned eight percent of Putnam County, he might have a spot.
Okay, uh, again with Bugsy here, we got a discussion of the drainage on Fair Street, I saw the pictures, thanks for all the, all the, all the notes on that.
Can I ask one question before we continue?
Yes.
Who's in on this meeting?
Everybody.
Everybody, whose names you see.
I don't see anybody's name.
So go to the bottom of your screen and it should be a, an icon that says participants?
There's eleven people.
Okay, alright.
Okay, can we carry on or is there a question?
Absolutely.
The, uh, discussion on the drainage, um, again, thank you for the, all the photos and everything, and I, I've walked over that, I didn't know about this, uh, the cul, the Catch Basin, um, the Catch Basin, so they, they came down with their sump and, uh, and cleaned it, but the lines are still clogged going in and exiting.
Correct, line in and exiting are both clogged.
And how do we remedy that?
Um, the one coming in, just wait for another heavy rain and unfortunately, it just keeps flowing through there. Um, possibly if I can find where it goes in underground by Rupert Holmes' driveway, I could get the fire department in to do a, um, to send like their smooth bore nozzle, you know, and just try and blow out whatever comes out and keep cleaning it out until that end of the pipe is done and clean. Um, the exiting pipe, um, is, I believe it was one point, an open channel for drainage back in the fifties or sixties possibly, because I have two walls and I believe a floor that's poured concrete, the top is two-inch thick bluestone and I believe it's two foot by three-foot pieces, and it's just set on top the whole way down. So technically, if I dig down about a foot, six inches to a foot, maybe eighteen inches, I will come to all that bluestone and I can just lift that right off and walk right down the whole thing and clean it out spotless.
I'm sorry, this is coming out and going under Fair Street?
The, when it comes down the hill and goes into the Catch Basin?
Yeah.
The pipe that exits the Catch Basin flows like we were discussing, basically uphill to that brook opening across from the sewer plant, it comes out of the, uh, like I said, the, the poured concrete form with the bluestone on top, it comes out of there and wraps around and it's supposed to go into the pipe that goes under Fair Street, right across from the sewer plant, which then attaches to the three-foot corrugated pipe that runs all the way out to the swamp. right across from the sewer plant, which then attaches to the three-foot corrugated pipe that runs all the way out to the swamp.
And the green grass grow around and around.
We, we still have the problem of the drainage pipe on um sixty-four uh Fair. The broken drainage pipe. Um, and, and it seems to me that we'll continue to get a whole bunch of silt dirt coming down the hill. Continuing to plug up the catch basin and the pipes. So we've got to do some, in my mind, we've got to do something about the side of the hill.
Um, one suggestion would be, and I don't even know if they make it. Um, I would have to look into it, would be a pipe, flex pipe, plastic flex pipe, big enough to go around the broken end that's sticking out of the ground where the water flows out of. Hooking onto that, running it straight down the hill and down past the end of the pavilion, there is a culvert on the east side that runs under Fair Street and then out to the swamp. That is one way to alleviate the problem of this catch basin continually filling and blowing out.
Yeah, it seems to me that, that, that using the um, the culvert, the northern, using the northern pipe under Fair Street is a, a better way to go than diverting the water to the south and then up the hill. Up, up, up Fair Street. It would also seem to me that a possible solution would be a trench on the east side of Fair Street going um, going to a point where it meets into the the pipe that goes underneath a Fair Street at, at the northern end of Mayor's Park. That, that may, might be a solution. Um, a, a pipe, a flexible pipe above ground. I mean, we'd have to get, that, that one, we'd have to get the property owner's permission to do.
Oh yeah, no, when I, I said just, when I meant flex pipe temporarily, just until we can get done what we need to get done. Um, corrugated plastic, hard corrugated plastic.
Yep.
We could trench down. The problem is, I know there is, it's either a sewer line or a water line and I'm almost positive it's a sewer line that runs down that hill.
That's the, that's the easement on the property. I, I, I agree with you. I would think that the easement would be the sewer line easement. Although Ehrlich Sewer Line is to the north of his house. I don't know who's, who's, what sewer uh connections come in from Grandview. I, yeah, I don't know who, who comes in from Grandview that way.
Well, it would have to be everybody who's below the uh height of nine D because there's no pump station up there and.
As we know, everything runs downhill.
Yes.
Is this a situation, Dave, where we should ask our engineering firm to come in and give us a recommendation?
Yes, or an engineer, yeah. I think we should, I mean, you could do a, a riprap or something up there. It's one thing. Whatever, we're gonna have to talk to the owner um on that. I'm sure he'd be glad anything underground that's not gonna keep washing away his property, he'd be fine with. Um, I don't know if he'd be happy with a riprap that, you know, like, like Haldane has when coming down their big hill and then that, but then it needs to go somewhere. Like you're saying, maybe the best way is, you know, more heavier stone going to the north and then connecting to a catch basin there that goes under. But yeah, let's uh, I think we need to get an engineer.
Do you want me to, do you want me to call P and D?
Uh, no, hold on that. I'll talk to you about that.
Um, what about, to the best of my knowledge, the owner uh is unaware of what we're looking into. He's aware that there, there was a problem, but um, shall I give him a call and let him know?
We can tell him we're working on it. We wanna, you know, we need to fix the problem.
Yeah.
On regular rains, like besides the, the downpours we had, is this flooded? This the first time that flooded down there?
First time it's ever come it.
Oh, come on, come on. There's been silt on First Street on a, on a number of occasions. Not necessarily come uh, uh, not necessarily a plume out of the catch basin in front of John's house. But I can remember many situations where First Street had a whole, a whole bunch of silt covering it north of that area.
Okay, so it's coming off the hillside. I thought you meant coming out of the catch basin. This is the first I've ever seen it come out of the catch basin.
Yeah, yes. I, I've never observed that before.
Okay, uh, we'll talk to an engineer and uh, see what we can come up with. Okay, uh, will we go along the approval of the minutes? I'll make a motion to approve minutes for July fourteenth, two thousand twenty.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Before we get into the uh, before we go into, we will ask the public if they'd like any questions. Uh, there's a couple of things that, you know, I'd just like to uh, to bring up and go over. Um, one is the graffiti um that was uh, found. The Antigay graffiti was found down by Mayor's Park. Uh, just so everyone knows, this was brought to our police's attention. Um, and we immediately uh, the on-duty police officer went down there. Um, we then immediately talked to Bugsy and uh, he took photos of, of, you know, of the graffiti the uh, police officer did. Uh, Bugsy and his crew went down there, tried to power wash it off and did the best they could with that. That didn't work too well and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Bugs. And then that was painted, um, a couple of coats of paint to cover the graffiti.
Correct.
So uh, that's, that's how we uh, you know, the initial actions we took. Um, it is under investigation or they're looking into it. There's, I talked to Officer in Charge Burke tonight. Um, he really doesn't have uh, any leads um, to, you know, who might have done that. Doesn't mean it's necessarily closed, but it might be a thing where we need someone to come forward on that. It's a darker area in the middle of the night or whatever. It's gonna be hard to find who did it. Um, so anyway, it's uh, the police are doing uh, what they can. Um, we take it seriously and uh, you know, that's where we're at, so I wanted everyone to know that. Um, the other is uh, the uh, the policy uh, review um, that the governor has ordered. Uh, I just want everyone to know to relax a little bit. I know there's a lot of talk out there and we want to be involved and blah, blah, blah. Um, everyone will be involved as, as is uh, as is required. Uh, right now, the first steps are uh, looking at what we do have. Um, Larry will be uh, going to the first meeting with Putnam County. Um, they had invited a number of towns. Uh, we're not necessarily, um, and I'm against, and I think Larry is like actually working with them from start to finish. But he wants to see how, how they're gonna handle it and uh, and how the other villages and towns are gonna handle uh, the review. Um, and once he knows that, uh, we'll move forward. We'll see what we have and see where we have to go with it. Uh, we will uh, have a panel and everyone will be invited. Um, you know, and, you know, everyone that's uh, that should be invited will be. So uh, that's where we're at with that. I just ask everyone to kind of uh, hang on there just for a little bit. Um, till we uh, you know, get everything in order and have a direction uh, so we can move forward on it. Take it seriously. Larry's taking it seriously. Um, but we're not just gonna jump into it and form a panel and not know where we're going and what we're doing yet. So let's get our information together. Let's get everything together and go from there and uh.
Is, is this something I need to be brought up to speed on? Cause I have no idea. Okay.
Unless you're interested, then you need to be brought up to speed on.
Okay.
So, so it's just as far as the panel goes and the involvement in the community, what's required, uh, we will comply with and uh, and, and, and work with everyone in the community uh, and all parties that are interested and need to be. Just wanted to follow up on those two things. I know there's been uh, words around. I've been getting a few more emails and usual things. So uh, that's where we're at with those. Okay, um, I guess so we'll open this up to the public. Uh, who's uh, monitoring? Uh, who's running this tonight?
Michael.
Hi, Michael.
Yep.
Is there any hands raised or people that would like to speak? Um, we will now entertain.
Kathleen Foley is raising her hand.
Okay.
Hi, I have a new computer and I haven't figured out how in Zoom with configuration to do the actual hand raising, so I'm sorry. I'm waving my hand physically, but that's how it is. Um, I just had a thought about the um, the compost. Do we have any property around, outside of the village, around the reservoir where we could put anything?
Bugsy and I talked about that last two weeks ago, Bugsy. Uh, there's a piece of property that was an old access road that ran, that runs parallel to Fishkill Road uh, from um Mary's family's property, Dave, um, Mary Mealy's family's property um, up to um the south end of the um, water treatment plant. Um, but I believe that that is all private property and I believe that a number of years ago, that when the village was attempting to um create a better access road to the water treatment plant, that road was considered, but then rejected because it was private property. To the best of my knowledge, that's it.
And what about, is there, do we, I don't know what we own around the dams themselves, if we have any extraneous property there where we could dump in the woods? No?
No.
No, that's, that's a problem to begin with.
And.
As, as Dave goes.
Yeah. Um, it seems like such a simple, it seems like such a simple thing and it's a huge challenge.
What you're thinking about your backyard?
I know, I know I'm one of the big generators, Bugsy. I know it.
You're not.
I feel like a big generator. Um, one of the other thoughts I had was, I, you know, I haven't ever looked on the site at Benedict. Um, I mean, I know where it is and I know where stuff gets dumped, but is there, would there be any benefit to borrowing? I think it's the townshipper that we borrow and pulling anything out and trying to reduce the size, like compact what's there? I, I have no idea how, how difficult that would be.
Uh, that'd be near impossible.
Got it. Sounds like we need a different kind of plan than anything I'm coming up with right now. That's all I had. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Have a good evening. Anyone else? Michael?
I'm not seeing anyone.
Okay, um, last call. All right, we're uh, as I stated earlier, we're going to our code update now and uh, everyone's uh, more than welcome to stay and watch. Uh, we won't be entertaining any more comments. Um, and as I said, uh, there will be a public hearing on the, the whole update once it's uh, all the recommendations are in. That said, um, I missed the last one. What's that?
Do you need me to stay?
No, do not. No.
Bye folks. Have a good night.
So Marie, do you, I, I wasn't here the last meeting, so uh.
And I want, I want to mention that we made great progress over the last three meetings.
That's great. Must be because I wasn't there.
Well, I was, I didn't want to say that, but um, so we're on chapter one oh four. Signs and placards. Uh, this is, yes.
I'm sorry, no, go ahead, go.
Uh, this is a uh significantly updated chapter. Uh, this is one of the topics from the Code Update Committee. The first the first comment uh, from Fran uh, is to delete the, the, uh, the question of having vinyl or impermanent materials. Currently, the uh, recommendation from the Code Update is to prohibit exterior signs that are made of cardboard, paper, canvas, or similar impermanent materials or flexible materials such as vinyl. And so there was objection within the village board as to uh, to vining, to prohibiting vinyl.
That was me. Um, just because I was looking at, at what is available for for temporary signs to get people's attention for events around town in particular, but you know, possibly other things. And really all we can do is either a permanent sign or the itty-bitty signs that you stick in the ground like a political sign, which really doesn't communicate um, communicate the details of any particular events very well, especially you know, for um, you know, for Fourth of July or Community Day or, you know, other things. So I, I, I think making sure that we have options for people um, for temporary signs and you know, that they don't have to spend a boatload of money on to do, I, I think is, is a good idea. Um, and, and the vinyl, you know, the grommeted vinyl signs with um wind cuts in them to make sure that they're safe, I think is a good option and I would recommend keeping it in there. Um, uh, just as long as they're installed safely as, as I wrote in my suggestion, uh, so that they don't become projectiles in the wind. And um, that's the only thing I would recommend. I, I think it's important that we have those options available to people. Um, other than, you know, a temporary sign, other than a tiny little thing that you stick in the ground that nobody looks at anyway.
Okay, so then Lynn, you're, you'll see that uh, there's a comment on, a suggestion on uh, one oh four dash three.
Yeah.
Nine.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to get this to load and my computer's acting real glitchy. I think I've got some connectivity issues, but hang on, let me, one oh four, three.
Three, three. D.
D.
Nine.
Nine.
And ten.
Yes.
What I had suggested was.
Missed a second. I, I'm having trouble here.
I think we're uh, we're under the area that talks about prohibited signs in all zoning districts. And I think nine said is part of prohibited signs, exterior signs made of cardboard, paper, canvas, or similar impermanent material. And then it also said, or a flexible material such as vinyl. I suggested taking out or flexible materials such as vinyl and adding another subsection that says, now we're talking about prohibited signs, exterior signs made of flexible materials such as vinyl, unless these are temporary signs referring to one oh four seven, and then these signs must conform to all requirements. Um, so that was, that was because I, I agreed that I think, you know, I understand what, what the board, what the Code Update Committee was saying that they don't think we should have vinyl signs, but I sort of agree with, with Lynn here, that what are we gonna do across, you know, putting signs as we, as we announce, you know, Community Day, Fourth of July, uh, whatever. So that was, that was my suggestion. Uh, and then I went down, um, well, we could go down further from there.
Yeah, I like your suggestions, Fran.
What if we limit how long you can have a vinyl sign up for?
Yeah. Temporary sign.
I don't know.
Yeah, there is a section on temporary signs, one oh four seven.
Four seven.
Yeah.
So I mean, that's what it is, it's a temporary sign.
Yeah. And my suggestion.
No definition of temporary sign.
Yes, there is.
Yeah, one oh four seven.
One oh four says that they cannot exceed twenty square feet in total area. They cannot be displayed for more than sixty days total in any one calendar years. Portable signs may be allowed with a permit. Uh, no internal or external lighting. No more than one temporary sign permit may be granted to or be in effect for any applicant, for an applicant at any one time.
Yeah, but what does temporary mean as far as time goes? Temporary means.
Less than, less than sixty days.
Yeah, and I have, I have a problem. I think I brought that up with sixty days. Sixty days is the whole summer.
Yeah, I, I think it could be less than sixty days, I would say. Um, you know, if it's, it maybe be two weeks before an event and, and a week after or something to that effect or uh, maybe thirty calendar days.
Yeah, a month before maybe.
Well, I think building some flexibility into that would be good because you know, if we limited it to two weeks before and two weeks after an event, then, then. you know, if we limited it to two weeks before and two weeks after an event, then, then that would prohibit, you know, what we did, the sign that we had for the, the Haldane graduates this year.
That's the point. Having a sign up for something that has already occurred doesn't make any sense.
No, it doesn't. But I, I think
Well, it was well wished, though.
Would be good.
Sorry?
The sign was left up there because we were wishing them well for, you know, not for a week, but for the whole time.
Sorry, you're talking about one specific sign. Yeah, so 104.7B, do you want to make it 20 days total in any one calendar year?
I would say 30.
30.
That gives, that gives promoter of an event plenty of time to get the message out. I'm thinking Wine and Food Festival or something like that. 30 days seems reasonable to me.
Yeah, but Wine and Food Festival and things like that, that ran into another whole issue of getting permission to hang it on. I mean, what we told the festivals was no more than a week before. You know, at that point, I mean, they're doing a lot of other advertising. I think we had said to both the Wine and Food Festival and to John, a week before was all they could do. Now, do we want to go more than that? I mean, these all, these all are going to be required to have a permit, so we may have to specify in the permit.
Well, I think if we, if, if in the code it says, like in 24.7B, such signs shall not be displayed by an activity or a business for more than 30 days total in any one calendar year. That way, it allows a couple of weeks leading up to hops, you know, to an event. And, and it also leaves, it leaves us the freedom to, to limit what they, what they're going to do. You know, particular to any specific event. But no more than 30 days in any one calendar year, to me, seems reasonable.
I think, I think 30 is okay. As long, I mean, it says no more than 30, which means that we have the option of going less than 30.
Yeah.
When we do the permit.
Yeah.
Are we good with 30?
Yeah, I think it's good. I'm just wondering, does that, does that limit a business to only one event per year? Or would that be in each individual case of wanting to hang a sign up? Because say you're doing three things that year or whatever. Like, does the wording exclude that possibility?
Yes, yes.
So that, that might not be good because, you know, it seems to be the same people doing these events every year. So if they're going to do more than one, which is, you know, that's been planned in the past, then that would, they could only advertise one time.
Well, it depends. I mean, if we keep to, you can only put it up a week before your event, then you can do it four times. Only four weeks.
Yeah.
It just seems like, that, that's a little, I don't know the right word.
Mean and nasty?
Yeah, it's just a little dicky. I don't know. You're messing with people a little bit there. So maybe that, those wordings can be moved around a little bit. I don't know how. I, I haven't even found where we were reading what we were reading before.
104, so before we were reading 104.3, I believe.
Oh, it was 3, okay.
It was 3 at the beginning.
Okay.
And then we moved down to 7.
Yep, I got the 7 part.
3G.
Well, I think we should limit to 30 days. I think that should change. And I think, I, I like the, you know, if it's 30 days, do you have to say before and after or?
30 days total.
It says in the, the, right under 104.7, it said, required, be erected for short duration, require sign permits which will indicate the dates during which the signs may be displayed. So I don't know how much we want to be exact terms of what, at this point, are we just going to, going to do it at each, each time we get a permit request? I mean, we're going to be consistent.
30, but building it, you know, understanding that the board has flexibility in how it permits those and when.
We get portable signs, the next, 104.7C, portable signs may be allowed with a permit, not to exceed placement for longer than, that should also be 30, right?
The portables, portable signs would include such things as Haldane, Haldane identifying a particular play. It would also include the Presbyterian Church, identifying the Jazz Vespers. It would include the chapel, identifying concerts. Those are, those are all signs that are portable.
What's the difference between C and say B? We, did we define portable signs someplace in here? I assume we did.
No, we did not. Portable signs are not, oh, I take that back. A port, no, portable signs are not defined. Those are signs that you can pick up and move. That's portable.
So is the difference between a portable sign and a temporary sign?
A temporary sign typically is something that is affixed to something.
Okay.
Non-portable.
Yeah, that's another way to put it.
Okay, that works for me.
Now, there was also F, Fran, as a suggestion.
Right, any temporary sign must conform to, should we put that in? Whoops, my screen keeps jumping all over the place.
What's that just mean?
Any temporary sign must conform to the requirements of 104.4, 104.5, or 104.6 based on zoning district. All right, I'm going to just copy that and put it in so everybody can see it.
Now, we need to, we need to have a, a caveat in there. Any temporary sign must conform to the requirements 104.5 or 6 based on the zoning district, except that flexible materials are allowed for temporary, in temporary signs.
Okay.
And what, like, just at the beginning of 104.7, it says to be erected for short duration of, short duration require, what is a short duration?
So if you look at B, it identifies the duration for portable signs and B identifies the duration for other than portable signs.
So do we want to keep the portable signs at 60 days and the other than portable signs at 30 days?
I don't know. If, all of the, the examples Marie gave, why do they need two months of advertising?
Well, anything
For example, Haldane has multiple, multiple play, the plays occur on multiple dates and they put the signs out a week or two before the date of the, the show. If, if you want to bring it down to 30, fine.
The Jazz Vespers signs.
I think there was I think there was one.
And they go on 19, and is that our, I mean, the question goes back to, is that strip of grass on 90 hours?
Nope.
It, it doesn't matter. It falls
It's within the village, okay.
That's right. It falls within the village and it's within a zoning district.
Okay.
In addition, the farmer's market sign in the wintertime, that's another portable sign.
Now, it used to be when Steve, Steve Bates was managing the farmer's market, he would put those up the day before the farmer's market and then take them down after. Now, they just leave them up all the time. So, you know, I'm just, I don't know if that's useful at all.
And you know they're not getting permits for them, they just put them in.
Yeah. Well, everybody just puts them in there too.
There's, there's the portable signs which are, which are typically sandwich board signs. And then there are the, the signs that people, that are framed by metal and stick into the ground. But if you want to, then change the portable signs to 30 days.
Do you want to go with that?
Yeah.
Yep, 3 doesn't help.
Yeah. Good.
Must exempt signs be erected for short duration, require sign permits, which indicate the dates. Such signs shall not exceed 20 square feet until now.
So you don't want to add anything about flexible signs having
I added it, I added it and F, we need to go back up because I know those are the comments up. I'm looking at the 20 square feet, the size of the sign, the banner that goes across Main Street is how big?
Oh, about 80 square feet? 90 square feet?
Yeah.
Which of course is illegal to put up, but I'm not going to mention that.
Well, it's illegal unless we ask Central Hudson or whoever if we can use their poles.
And we don't do that.
And we don't, and we should, and we, we're, I mean, we're
And Central, Central Hudson has always said, no, those are not allowed.
So maybe we just need
A large banner, which is an exception, and I think we've only made one exception with Haldane because of COVID, that we have not allowed, and I'm not willing to allow any other signs to go up there. I think it was a special circumstance that we allowed another banner to go up there. The other is what we do and as the village and what we're doing. So I don't know who else is adding huge banners somewhere. They're not going to put them up on our property across roads. I mean, I wouldn't allow banners if you want to, exceeding a certain size, which I think there's sizes in here. I mean, if somebody wants to put a small banner up and it would have to be with a permit for like the affair, the events that we've had down in Mayor's Park, then we could allow that. And that's, and that's, you know, included in our permit process for the use of our parks. Other than that, people can't just put banners up, I don't think. And I don't think we want them to.
No, I don't think we should either. I'm just wondering, do we want to, as we write this, do we want to take into consideration the size of the banner we put up? Or does that, if we just, we don't need to discuss?
Okay.
It's so situational, how could you describe it? You know?
Okay.
We had one for Fourth of July, right? And then
That's the only one, other than Haldane. And Haldane was only this year because of the situation.
Right.
We have had another request to put one up, I believe. So, and I think we're going to get more because we did that, but I think we shouldn't, we shouldn't allow it because it's not supposed to happen, so.
Yeah, I wouldn't.
We could tell the people to contact Central Hudson and then they can go from there. Because they're going to say no.
What if Central Hudson decides to say yes, then we're stuck with a banner across Main Street?
What's that?
Say, what if Central Hudson decides to say yes, then we're stuck with a banner across Main Street?
They're not going to let us.
Well, I would still like to, I would still like to have something in the code about the safety of flexible signs. Because we, because even if, even if they're just attached to the fence at Mayor's Park, they still need to have wind cuts in them. Because that, and, and also if they're put up with metal stakes, they need to make sure that they have wind cuts so that they don't become a sail and wind up being a safety hazard.
That's, well, that, just Mayor's Park or any of our property, they'd have to have a permit, which we would have that in. But I don't know, who else is having banners that we need? I mean, I don't know. Is there anyone else?
The festivals in particular, so.
I, I don't know which other, I mean, I'm, I don't know, I don't think we should have large banners, period. Step for ours.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if we can limit, have we limited like all of our signs to a size that would kind of?
Yes, all the signs are limited to a size based upon the, based upon the zoning district.
What's that?
All that, all signs are limited to a size based upon the zoning district.
Okay. And there's none that are excessively large, are there?
I think the, the largest would be in B2. Let me go to B2. B2, the size of a sign shall be no more than one square feet for each linear foot of the individual storefront occupied the basis. Signs exceed, signs cannot exceed 80 square feet for each business. So that's the largest.
That's pretty big.
Yes, and that was meant to address signs such as, if you look at the, the sign that lists the, the businesses in the Food Town parking, the Food Town area, that's why we came up with the 80 square feet. Also, and I don't know how big these are, but typically the gas station signs are, I'm going to say probably a 10, 20
30?
35, 40 square feet.
Probably 40.
40 square feet. But this is the largest.
Now, if you look on both sides, it's 80 square feet. So if we, if we go back up to 104.3, so are we okay with what we did on D9 and 10? Taking our flexible material and adding it as a separate?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. All right. My fingers keep doing the wrong thing. Okay, and then we added E, signs on public property, no signs are permitted on public property except as permitted in 104.5 or 104.6. That's fine with me. Anybody? Yes, no, maybe?
Where are we at?
104.3E, we added E, signs on public property.
And this then would include the signs, the signs that are framed in metal and stuck in the ground along Chestnut Street.
Okay. So we're okay?
That looks good.
104.3E, sorry. I have not, I have a little laptop. Probably not even on it. I'm not following this well. I don't think I'm on the right.
Okay, you want me to take a deep breath?
Question I have, but I don't even know if I'm looking at the right thing.
Do we want to, we can finish this and then just go back and everybody review it for any more comments before we finalize on 104?
Yeah, Fran, can you accept the 104-6E, which is deleting the S?
Okay, yes. Okay. We just did temporary signs, 104.7. Non-conforming signs, Marie, this gets into, did John ever get back to you on this?
No.
104.9, and the, the, what I found when I was reviewing this is this, this was all hyperlinked to Walk Hill's code. All of these things, so he must have cut and pasted from Walk Hill. So Article 11 in Walk Hill's code refers to their planning board. That's why I thought he, it should refer to Chapter 21. Do you want to hold until you talk to him?
Yeah, until, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was, it was hyperlinked all the way down, so I assumed he just cut and pasted. Yeah, it was, it was hyperlinked all the way down, so I assumed he just cut and pasted.
On, in 104-4C, it says, and I understand it, but I, I don't know, it says, uh, no permit is needed for either sign, and I'm sure that's referring to street numbers and home occupations, but,
Yes.
I don't know if it should be written differently.
Okay.
Can you say where that is? I'm sorry, Dave, where are we?
104-4C.
104-4C.
Right.
No permit is needed for either sign. So, then that kind of refers back to, but I mean A and B?
Right.
Street number of property.
No permit is needed for either 104-4A or 104-4B.
Yeah, I think that should be added.
I hope people are still going.
That work, okay? This permit is needed for either sign mentioned in 104.4A or 104.4B, all the signs. All the signs are prohibited unless exempt.
We should be done, so.
Okay. So, do we want to, want to?
What's that?
Do you want a table? Come back to it in our next review?
Sure.
Are we good?
I have a quick question. 104.5C, is the, the 30%, does that mean total signage, like, or just one sign, or interior sign coverage, does that mean all, all signs? Like, if you have 20 signs, it can only be 30%?
30% of the glass area of the window in which it is displayed, yes.
Okay.
So, it's total. So, you want me to put total in there? Interior sign coverage, total interior sign coverage, or?
I mean, maybe I'm reading it wrong if it's clear.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
Sorry. Interior sign coverage shall not exceed 30% of the glass area of the window in which it is displayed. So, if you add it in there, total interior sign coverage shall not exceed 30% of the glass area of the window in which it is displayed. It becomes, to me, it becomes confusing. Is it 30% of each window or 30% in total? And it's intended to be 30% for each window.
Of each window, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
It says in, in the window in which it is displayed, so it would sound like one sign to me.
Shall not exceed 30% of the glass.
Or is that the window? Okay, the window in which it is displayed. Okay, got it. My, my bad.
Want to take out?
No, that's good.
No.
I was reading it differently.
Okay. Oops, too many eyes.
So, you're having an eye problem, not just an S?
Yep, today's an eye problem. Okay.
I'm good with whatever.
We're good.
So, we'll just go over this and then, before we finalize?
Yeah, we have to wait for John to answer, Maria, 104.9.
Marie, could you once again send these to me, the ones we're reviewing now, not the ones we did already? I just want to double check and make sure I'm on the same page. I think I am, but.
Okay.
If you could, whenever.
Okay. And then will we review? Okay, do we want to?
No, not until 106. 106, I have two issues with John on that, and he hasn't gotten back to me.
Did you want to look at the permit for 106 or no?
Sure, people can look at that.
I mean, did anybody have a chance to look at the permit?
I did.
Yeah.
You're the only one that had any comments, Fran. And I, I think we got all of that resolved, right, Fran? Yeah, there are no, there are no open questions on the permit. So, this is the steep slope permit that, uh, this is a new permit, which will go along with the new Chapter 52, Steep Slopes. Any comments on 52? I'm sorry, on the permit? Okay, shall we go to Chapter 52?
Am I muted or unmuted?
You're not muted. I'm hearing you.
No, I just got to note this. That the host is muted. Um, so the next one is 52.
Flood, uh, sorry, floodplain management.
Floodplain man?
I'm sorry?
Yes, that's, that's all I have. Am I, am I here? My internet connection is unstable. That's the notes, that's the notes I'm getting across my screen. I apologize.
Okay, so the, this is a question that you raised in multiple places in, in Chapter 52. Manufactured homes are prohibited by the zoning code, which is why manufactured homes has been stricken from, uh, Chapter 52. The major change to Chapter 52 was the inclusion of the tying down of tanks located in floodplain. These are exterior tanks and interior tanks. Typically, they're oil tanks or propane gas tanks or whatever. What has been shown is that when the tanks are not tied down during a flood, the, the tank can pull away from the piping that brings either the oil or the propane gas into the, the structure, creating an unsafe condition, and then the tank can float away. The same thing occurs when the tanks are in a basement. The tanks have to be tied down in a basement as well, because if the basement floods, the tanks can also break away. And in some cases, the tanks have broken away and gone through the ceiling of the basement and into the first floor. That's how buoyant the tanks can be. So, the primary change to, uh, Chapter 52 was including the, the tie-down requirements. In doing that, there were outdated sections in Chapter 52, such as 52-19, which talked about manufactured homes and recreational vehicles. Also updated was the date of the most current FEMA map, as well as some other changes that were required because the language was incorrect or incomplete.
Okay, um, I think I'm good. The reason why I had questioned, um, crossing off manufacturers' homes because I know that there's a trailer home on Wall Street, Rock Street?
Yeah, Wall Street.
And that was my question to Marie, but as Marie was saying, that house was grandfathered in. And there are no more, we're not allowing any more manufactured homes in the village, so I'm fine with, with going through and making that adjustment through.
Well, as it turns out, the, the, there was a trailer there when the zoning law came into effect. So, that trailer was, was grandfathered in. Since that time, the trailer has been replaced by a newer trailer. And I don't know when that occurred. I'd have to go back to my notes, but it was probably 20 years ago. And then there was a fire in the trailer about 10 years ago. And I brought this up as an issue to the building inspector. But he, it was his opinion, and he issued a permit to rebuild the trailer.
Okay, so, so that is the one and only trailer we'll ever have in the village at this point.
Well, as it turns out, no, there are a couple of others.
Um, excuse me for being, asking a dumb question, if this is a dumb question. You know, when Melissa Santos and her husband Darren rebuilt their home after the fire, it was, it was brought in and, in sections. So, technically, their rebuilt home is a manufactured home. It's not a, it's not a, a mobile home or a trailer as, as you're talking about. Are, are these two the same as far as the code is concerned? I just didn't?
No, um.
Prefab.
Prefab, okay.
Right, a prefab is different than a manufactured home, sorry, than a house trailer. A house trailer has to have chassis that will allow it to be driven away.
I see, okay.
Okay, whereas a manufactured home is brought in in sections and then sited on the, the, it's got a foundation typically.
Thanks for clearing that up. I just wasn't, I wasn't.
I hate prefabricated houses, so we outlaw them anyway, because I don't like.
Do we need to?
Should be built, you know, where they, where they're being built, not somewhere else and trucked in, so. Just my opinion.
Do, do we need to? I know that we crossed off the definition of manufactured homes, uh, because, but do we need to specifically say they're not allowed, or it doesn't go in this, it doesn't go in this plan, never mind?
It wouldn't go in this.
I'm going to do with floodplain, okay.
Okay, because they are prohibited in the village.
Right. So, should we just move on to the adjustments in 52-2D? We added the word construction, control, filling, let me see. Purpose to promote the public health, safety, and general welfare and to minimize public and private losses due to flood conditions in specific areas by provisions designed to, and then D, control, filling, grading, dredging, and other construction?
I'm sorry, Fran, where are you at?
Uh, 52-2D. I read the heading and now I'm onto the, you added the word construction, and then you added the word activities.
Right.
Okay, so, construction, development activities, that's all one phrase, right?
Construction development activities, yeah, all one phrase.
Okay. And then F, qualify and maintain standards for participation in the National Flood Insurance Program. Okay. Anybody need me to stop on the way down? Holla. Okay, um, building means any structure. Oh, okay, the definition of building used to be C, structure. Now, the definition is means any structure having a roof supported by columns or by wood and intended for the shelter, housing, or enclosure of persons, animals, or chattel.
Chattel.
Chattel, thank you, whatever, chattel.
It's sort of a, it's sort of a standard definition.
Things you own.
Say it again, Steve?
Things that you own.
No, okay. Um, but you're saying it has a roof, does it have to have sides?
No.
It doesn't have to be enclosed, it's just any structure having a roof supported by, okay.
A personal possession, chattel.
Good, thanks, Steve.
I was right, hey?
I knew I'd learned something. Okay. Uh, down to, um, 52.4, flood boundary and floodway map, the definition means an official map of the community and refers to the most current map, which is good. Most current map I found was 2013, right, Marie?
Yes, yeah, and I think, and I think the date is in here someplace.
I think I did run into it, okay.
Yeah, it was 2013.
And then I went back to, of course, why should I do that? The next definition, floodplain or flood-prone area, means any land area susceptible to being inundated by water from any source. Then you say, see the definition of flooding. And now, I, is this determined by FEMA or would it just be by public knowledge? For example, it's, we're saying any land susceptible to being inundated by water.
Right, and the FEMA floodplain map shows areas that are at risk within the geographic boundaries of the specific floodplain map. So, it would show you that by zones, and you, you'll see here mentioned different zones. So, in elevated buildings, you can see zones A1 through A30, AE, AA99, AO.
Right. But what I'm thinking, now, I've looked at the FEMA floodplain maps, at least I think I was looking at the right thing. And Market, Market Street is not considered in the floodplain. But we know Market Street floods when, when the river floods over, on, you know, big storms and stuff like that. So, we're talking about a flood-prone area. Does it mean that area, to me, is susceptible to being inundated by water?
I'm surprised that Market Street is not included in the, in the FEMA map.
I mean, I've looked at it, and I've looked at it, and I've looked at it, and I, you know, it just sort of, why it doesn't include that far back, I don't know, because, I mean, living here, we know that it floods back there. You know?
I'll look it up tomorrow, Fran.
Yeah, would you? Because I may be looking at the wrong thing. All right, the definition of local administrator, a person appointed by resolution of the Board of Trustees of the village to administer and implement this local law by granting or denying development permits in accordance with its provisions. The person is often the code enforcement officer or employee of an engineering department. In addition to needing a permit under this chapter, the HD, Historical District Review Board, the Planning Board, and/or the Zoning Board of Appeals may be required to review the proposed development to ensure that the request conforms to other chapters in the Village Code of the Village of Colesbury. Anybody, oh, everybody okay? Good to go. Okay. Okay, so we're taking out the definition of manufactured home? Taking out the definition of manufactured home or subdivision, manufactured home park or subdivision? Taking out the definition of mobile home? Okay, okay, my question on principally above ground was the, it refers to 51% of the cash value of the structure. Well, I would, I was wondering, shouldn't it be defined as 51% of the square footage of the structure rather than cash value?
Okay, so this ties into the definition of substantial damage, which quotes a, a damage amount where, um, which defines what substantial damage is. In addition, and this is a fairly common definition. In addition, one would have to get into this chap, into, in this chapter, what the definition of the square footage of the structure is. Is it, does it include the basement? Does it include? Does, do you measure the square footage from inside the studs or inside the sheet rock? Or do you measure it from the external walls? And instead of getting into that.
We're going with cash value. That works for me.
I mean, a real estate person says there's a square footage of a place. I mean, I'm sure there's an accepted, if you wanted to go there. Saying, I don't think, when people are doing square footage in real estate and say it's a 600-square-foot home, it's, well, where's that measured from? Is that measured?
Well, actually, we do go into, get into that in detail in Chapter 134. But.
Are we, are we signing off at 8:30 or?
Yes.
Hopefully.
I have, because I, you know, honestly, I, the last month I have not looked into this stuff, so I'm just.
Do we want, do we want to fizzle out now?
Pride at this point and doing, being of no use. So, I would like to sign off if you guys want to finish up and, uh, close the meeting, if that's okay? Because I'm really not following anything that's going on here. I haven't had time.
Do we want to stop now and start on 52 or start on?
Finish this up, that's fine. I just, you know, just.
No, I, 52 is very long, um, and I don't. 52 is very long, um, and I don't, I don't think we're going to finish it anyway, so I'm, I'm fine with, with taking, stopping it here if anybody else is.
Well, we were stopping in nine minutes anyway, correct?
Yes.
All right, that's what I was asking. I, you know, I don't want to close the meeting, but I just really am kind of a little bit lost. I didn't, I haven't been concentrating, so.
I'm good with calling it a night.
So our next meeting will be next Wednesday night?
It's a regular, regular board meeting, right?
Yep.
Okay, so.
Present.
Sure, Steve, go ahead.
Got to go, sorry.
Don't forget to get your comment test. Yeah, you can do this by Zoom. Okay, so we have to wait for John to respond on 104.
And 106.
106. So the only thing we actually did okay tonight was this, the permit. So we'll start with 52 next week and do 52, 108, 111. Unless someone, unless John comes back with something else.
Okay.
Good?
We approved the steep slopes permit?
I think nobody had a problem with the permit, right?
Oh, no. I didn't know if we didn't vote on it or anything. You just meant, looking it over, we're okay with it. Like, don't we have to? You know, isn't that something that we have to?
Do we want to?
To deal with?
Do we usually vote on them or we just, we just finish them and approve them? We say everybody's okay. Do you want?
Well, I just, the permit's kind of different because that was an aside from, from what we're doing with the review. I don't know.
Right. Shall we, shall we wait on the permit? I'll hold off on everything until next week. So we'll start on 52 next week and then see where we go from there. We're good?
Sounds good.
All right.
Thank you, sorry for not being with it tonight.
Not a problem. You, you making a motion? Have we done?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right. Good night, all.
Good night, all.